All right, let's call this meeting to order. Our invocation will be delivered by Pastor Monty Polk of Saint John's Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for your many blessings. We thank you that we're able to reside in a city like Moncks Corner. We thank you for your blessings you've placed upon Moncks Corner and ask for your continued blessings upon it. I lift our leaders to you as they discuss the business of this community, and I pray that they will continue to have a heart for the citizens. Now Scripture reads out of Philippians, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit; rather in humility value others above yourselves." And I thank you for those that lead and have led us with this heart for others. Lord, may your protection be over this town and your blessings continue and endure for us. In thy son's name I ask this, amen.
Amen, thank you. Our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Ware.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a special presentation tonight, a proclamation for the 2025 Women in Construction Week, March 2nd through the 8th. Is Ashley Garrett here? Can you come up to the podium, please? All right, 2025 Women in Construction Week, National Association of Women in Construction. Whereas the Palmetto Chapter of SC 385 has distinguished itself for seven years as the voice of women in construction in Moncks Corner, South Carolina, and whereas the work done by the Palmetto Chapter of SC 385 has benefited Moncks Corner through community development and educational programs, and whereas the Palmetto Chapter of South Carolina 385 has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, and whereas the construction community represented by Palmetto Chapter of SC 385 has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trade careers, and a positive vision of the future. And whereas the Palmetto Chapter of SC number 385 has sought to achieve successful results for Moncks Corner and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Thomas J. Hamilton, Jr., and council members of the town of Moncks Corner do hereby recognize the Palmetto Chapter of SC 385 and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf and support of women in construction, and do proudly proclaim the week of March 2nd through 8th, 2025, as Women in Construction Week, and encourage our citizens to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments. Proclaim this 18th day of February, 2025. Congratulations. Come back up, please. Do you want to say a few words?
Just thank you so much for honoring us and giving us an opportunity to be here. And I am a small business owner in the community. I have a property inspection company, so happy to be a part of this community and a part of the Palmetto Chapter for Naewick. And glad to have a chance to bring my son, who's in high school, to come and see how our community functions and the work that you guys do. So thank you so much.
All right, approval of minutes for our regular meeting, December 17th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Special meeting minutes, January 25th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mayor's report. All right, it's going to be a little longer since we did not have a meeting in January. December 19th, 2024, I took our part-time recreation field workers out to lunch to celebrate all their hard work that they do for the town. December 19th, I attended the Christmas musical at the Train Depot. December 20th, I participated in the Read-a-thon at Bonner Elementary. January 10th, 2025, I read the Miss Spahn's class at the Nazareth Reform Episcopal Church. January 14th, I read to the class at Happy Days Daycare. January 14th, I went to the John Lewis Youth Leadership Award Ceremonies for the Wasomassaw Vice Chief Joshua Schumack. January 16th, I was invited to speak to the retirees from Alcoa, Alumax, and Century Aluminum about the things that are going on in the town of Moncks Corner. January 17th, council and I were invited to participate in a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Parker's Kitchen located at 318 South Live Oak Drive, Moncks Corner. Councilmembers David Dennis and Latore Lloyd also participated. January 20th, I participated in the Dr. Martin Luther King Parade. Councilwoman Lloyd also participated and was the grand marshal. There was a celebration held at the Moncks Corner AME Church, where Councilman Lloyd and I both spoke during the program. February 2nd, I was invited to a luncheon at the Moncks Corner Baptist Church. They have been approved to start spending funds on the construction of the soup kitchen. February 4th, I attended the American Legion meeting and introduced the Berkeley High School Band Booster Club. They made a presentation to the American Legion requesting support to purchase a commercial fryer. The American Legion Post 126 provided the funding to purchase one. February 7th, staff held a farewell luncheon for Chief Stephen Young. Councilmembers Dennis Law and Lloyd and I attended. February 7th, I attended the promotion ceremony for the Police Department. February 10th, I was invited to attend Stephen Young's swearing-in as Chief of Staff at the Dorchester County Council Chambers. February 11th, I attended a recognition ceremony in honor of Carl Morrison for 25 years of coaching in the Recreation Department. February 13th, I met with the Sterling Oaks Homeowners Association to talk about what is happening in the town of Moncks Corner. And finally, on February 14th, I provided a Valentine's Day KFC lunch to 35 seniors at the Berkeley County Senior Center. And that's my report. Administrator's report? Administrator Lord?
Yeah, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'm sure you noticed we have a metal detector, and it is a portable unit, and so we'll be trying different configurations to find out how best works in that space that we have. But glad to finally have that online for use, obviously, for council meetings and any other public meetings we have in court as well. The playground project is still on track to be completed in July. We did have one hiccup with the stormwater for the parking lot next to the pavilion, and then necessitated a change order in an amount of $90,794 to put new stormwater and boxes, stormwater pipe and boxes in, as well as additional fill. The Whitesville and Jolly Projects are still moving along, projected to be done March 20th. We did receive the $1.2 million grant for the sidewalk along Remember Dennis and Stone Lane Road. So right now, we're waiting on DOT to send us a participation agreement for the town's 20% match. So great to finally have that official word on that. We are also working on an NRCS grant for work in the California branch. It includes work in the branch as well as property buyout purchases. So we're in the final stages of that grant application right now.
We still have more people on sale?
We have not reached out to them yet. We've got to finalize things with NRCS, and then we'll reach out and see who's interested.
Is FEMA involved in that also?
No. No, it's just-
They were involved previous time?
Yeah, FEMA was the first time. This is the NRCS, which is underneath the USDA. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
New business, a resolution directing the Town of Moncks Corner Planning Commission to conduct the studies and recommend an ordinance for the imposition of development impact fees as required by the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act and other matters related thereto. Administrator Lord, did you want to speak on it?
Yeah, so this is the first step in the impact fee process. By this resolution, you're directing the planning commission to evaluate the impact fees and recommend an ordinance to council. So with the adoption of this, then it'll go to the planning commission at their council meeting next week.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consideration, leave policy update. Administrator Lord?
Yeah, so we've looked at the leave policies for the town and trying to recommend something that makes us a little more competitive on the job market. The way it's being restructured is it doesn't change the overall amount of leave that people will get. It just makes it so they achieve it sooner. For example, right now, everybody less than a year gets a week of vacation leave, and then after a year, they get two weeks. But currently, that doesn't change for 10 years. It's 10 years before there's another break. And so what we're proposing here is that after five years, it then goes to two and a half weeks, and after seven years, it goes to three weeks. And then, right now, four weeks is achieved after 20 or more years, but under proposal, that would be achieved at 15 years. And just to kind of give you perspective, right now, we have six employees who are now over the 20. We have no employees that are between 15 and 20. So there are some people who will be approaching 15 in the next few years that they would benefit from this, but with no change, they would not get that for another more than five years, in addition to what they already need to wait. So we did a financial analysis, and it looked, compared all of our current employees with our current time and grade. This has a 5% impact to our vacation liability. And then, we also forecasted out those positions that are likely to have somebody come in to fill their, while they're gone. Because some people, when they're at vacation, you know, they set things up, and we don't call somebody in to replace them while they're gone. But some positions, we do, firefighters, police officers. Looking at that, we estimate about a 5% impact increase on the, on how, not 5% increase on overtime, but a 5% increase on how leave policies impact overtime.
Obviously, this is going to make us competitive on attracting recruited employees. How does this compare to other leave policies around the area as far as other municipalities and counties and things of that nature?
I don't have any specific instances of comparing. From what we're hearing from job candidates and other places, this does make us comparable to other places, but I don't have any specifics for you.
So this is bringing us on par with what other programs?
That's how I understand it, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Jeff, should there be a stop somewhere between seven and 15 years? It seems like a, seems like a big gap from that seven. Should it be a stop at 10 along the way?
I mean, this can be whatever y'all, y'all would like.
What have you seen? What's, is there a norm?
They're, 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 they're all over the place. It just depends on what you're trying to do. The attempt here was to, you know, add another break and to reduce the next level from five years, from 10 years to five years. People don't have to wait 10 years to get to the next level.
10 years just seems like a, a big milestone, five years, 10 years. We have it broken every three years, and then all of a sudden, we jump eight years. So I'm just wondering if there should be a stop in there? If that would make sense?
Let me, let me do, real quick, let's do a motion in a second. Let's talk about it and discussion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All right, any discussion? To Councilman Law's point, you know, when I first proposed it, I was wanting to, because Goose Creek and a lot of other places start out at two weeks, but it becomes a cost, you know, a larger cost. But in my original plan, I did have more days at the 10-year mark. And if that's something council is willing to do, I think we could look at that.
If you look at the current policy, though, we're already, you know, getting to four. The current policy is 20, 20 years or more for four weeks. So we're already cutting into that.
Right.
And how many employees, did you say, Jeff, that we have?
We have six.
That are over?
Over the 20.
One over 40.
So I think this is a good start to get this implemented, and then we can always readdress it down the road.
Yeah, I mean, if y'all want to make a change, then you can make that, you know, amend your motion to make a change and adopt it. If you want to do it, or we can come back to you at the next council meeting.
When, when, when you're saying stop, instead of 15, make that stop at 10?
Well, I mean, it's, it's like we have these, you know, we've, we're incentivizing the three to, the one to five to seven, and then we, and then we make them wait a whole seven years, eight years. I'm just saying, should that tier be a little bit lower? And then jump from maybe 10 to 20 years instead of giving that eight-year timeframe in there? All the same numbers, I think it would be worth looking at. I'm okay with, I'm okay with looking at it further at another time and moving forward with this as it is right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you wanted to just go ahead, I mean, it would be easy just to go after 10 years, three and a half weeks.
Yeah, do three and a half at 10, and then, just like you've done-
Yeah.
Two, two and a half, three, three and a half, and up to four after 15, yeah.
All right, so if that's what you want to do, I believe you made the motion, so just amend your motion.
Yes, amended.
And then you, and the second, right?
Second.
Yeah, I had the second. So can we amend the motion to state it?
Do at 10 years, three and a half weeks, 3.5 weeks.
At 10 years, three and a half weeks, and then?
Everything else is the same.
Everything else is the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion to approve? I'm, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? That passes. Consideration, social media services. Administrator Lord?
Yeah, so we, let me just flip to it one second. So on December 13th, we advertised for social media services. We received nine responses, but two of them came in late. So we evaluated seven that were on time. After reviewing those, we selected two firms that we brought in and to look at their work closer and talk to them and interview them. After that, our recommendation is to engage Upland Social. Their proposal is for $3,200 a month on a month-to-month basis. This will have a $24,000 impact this year, but next year, it'll be a $38,400 impact. And just as a reminder, this is something that staff has handled today, but with us realigning some positions, this allows us to outsource that function. And so it's not such a time-consuming task for people on staff.
Mr. Mayor, if I may-
Approve $25,000 at the beginning of the fall or somewhere near that?
Yes, so we came to you, and our thought was be $25,000. And this does keep you under that for this fiscal year, but then next year, it will go to 38. Most of the proposals were, well, there were some lower than the $3,200, but most of them were much more than that.
But we're not going to exceed the $24,000?
Not this year.
You will next year. Substantially.
Where exactly are we getting for this money? I mean, will they be at every event the town has?
So they'll be at the major events, but they'll also, if we've got any kind of posting we want to do, we can send it to them, they handle the posting, they moderate the comments.
So they reply to comments to the town?
Yes.
That whose discretion that?
Yeah, I mean, we will be supervising them.
And they have to do seven posts a week, is, am I correct?
That was, that was based on a kind of a, their recommendation was to be around four posts a week, but because we, we're not a business, we have more traffic delays and other kinds of posts we do, that's why we're higher than that, than the four. But that was what the recommendation was.
So what happens if we go above the seven posts per week?
They're not going to charge us. It's just some weeks might be 10 posts, some weeks might be five posts, but the seven posts is just kind of a marker. And so in the future, if we end up having 20 posts a week, they're going to say, all right, we need to reevaluate, that's why it's a month to month.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I've got a few questions. Do you want to call a motion and go into discussion?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion?
Jeff, if I may, I've got, I've got a couple of things that, that are just kind of a little standout to me as concerning. So this is about, what are we looking, $13,000 more than what we said we were going to budget for this a year?
Yes, sir.
And when you looked at this, I see that several of the submittals were received late. Were all of those about in the same realm of pricing?
They really ranged wide and far. Most of them were well higher than this amount.
Higher than this amount?
Not all of them, some of them were lower.
Was there a loss of service there?
It's just in our opinion, this is the better fit for what we're in need of.
I also want just a little explanation on the record for, for everybody, because I'm sure this question would be out there. If we're looking at someone who's 15 to 20 hours a week, because that's what we're looking at, part-time position, and this is $3,200 per month, $38,000 a year, why would we not create a position for that and bring them on? Can you talk a little bit to that?
Fundamentally, we don't have anywhere for them to sit. We, I mean, we are, every, every office, every desk is taken. We've had to realign some positions, which is what necessitated this, to be able to address our planning needs, and for us to be able to meet the other needs that we have to do. The best thing, our recommendation is the best thing to do is outsource this function.
And with that, I know there would not be the cost of, of employee benefits and things like that on top of that 38, so we're not having to incur that extra expense as well. Is that correct?
But if it's a part-time position-
There wouldn't be benefits in that, would there? Well, I mean, there'd be the retirement, the FICA, those other additional fees that any employee pays. But there wouldn't be health insurance, and there wouldn't be that. Yeah, there would, but there would be retirement and those other things which are mandated for temporary and regular employees.
Jeff, how quickly do we need this in place? Is this a yesterday thing, or is this a?
Right now, I'm your social media person, and so-
That works for me.
I would, I would, I would like to be able to get this going.
And this year here, I mean, will be pretty much what we said, the $25,000 for this year. And it's month-to-month, correct?
Right.
So if we can see what happens this year, and if it's not working, or we're not happy, we can move on from them at that point.
Yes, so that was my next question, is the month-to-month thing. It's contractually, it's month-to-month?
Yes.
No, no benefit or no penalty, rather, for getting out or anything like that other than the 30 days? Got it?
I understand the need and all for the position, but where I'm just unclear is, they're going to be coming to events, they're going to be documenting the events via video, pictures, and posting.
It's not going to be a town employee there documenting the event?
Right, they're not going to be coming to every council meeting.
But we as a town and our staff are also going to be providing them with pictures to upload and commentary to put under there. And you see where I'm going with this? The town employees are still involved, staff is still involved, department heads are still involved. And then, once we start getting feedback from the public, I feel like whoever this is, he or she is going to be reaching out to you or to Liva or to Logan going, how do I respond to Councilman Law's post about the trash not being picked up correctly? And then y'all are back involved. So I'm, I'm just unclear on how much is really relieving off of y'all.
So it's similar to as if we hired an employee to do the same thing. Until they were trained up and, you know, familiar with everything, we would still have the same interactions. And it's also the same for, you know, creating posts. Like right now, the various departments will send me pictures and some text, some copy, you know, and then I try to go in and make it sound, you know, appropriate for social media, do some editing. That's, that function is what's being outsourced. And so we will still have the department heads or whoever else sending them content. They're the ones that are going to pre it up, make it appropriate for the platform that it's on, and, and, and put it out there.
I'm fine with it since we've already got $25,000 budgeted this year, and our upcoming budget's in October, and it's month-to-month to get this kind of a trial run and see what it does. I just still have some-
Yeah, I think it's, I think it would be good for a trial basis. Let's see how it works and, and let's reevaluate.
And this is, from what it says, a local company?
Yes, yes, they are based in Moncks Corner.
Is Christian Jones here tonight?
No.
Okay, I was just wondering.
We have a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Consideration, architectural services for town hall renovations. Administrator Lord?
Yes, so we solicited qualifications November 15th and received them on December 16th. We received four submittals, and we scored them. The score sheets are in your packet. And based on that, we, we chose three to interview. After interviewing those three, staff felt like Creachan Associates was the most qualified for this project, and then started talking to them about what the engagement would look like, and that's what's in your packet. Their proposal is broken into two, one for public safety and one for everything else. The reason it's done that way is that this, the, this design engineering is partially being paid for by a grant from Berkeley County. The requirement is that they will only pay for the public safety portion of it. And so that's why this is broken into two proposals, public safety portion and then everything else. So it's in two phases. The first phase is for the master plan. This is where they're going to come in and kind of do all the pre-drawings. This is what it's going to look like, this is where we're going to put everybody. The total on that is $20,000. And then after that, then they would go into the engineering, the design phase. And they have it priced at 10% of the total construction cost, but they did put a floor in there. So if you, our current estimate is about $7.7 million for all the work. And so 10% of that is $770,000. But the floor would be $619,000. So if we don't end up doing as much as we expect, then we will save that amount of money. However, if we end up doing more than we expect, then obviously, it would escalate to whatever, whatever that number would be. Obviously, you're going to choose what that number is when the time comes. So I had another point, but I can't remember what it was.
All right, let's go ahead, and do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion?
Jeff, yeah, I'm, I'm getting there. On this, do we have any idea what kind of timeframes we're looking at? I mean, is, I know construction begins January 2026, that's a, that's a dream there, but completion date and all of that, I see some of that in here, but not completely. Are they giving us any of that at this point?
At this point, it's premature for them to give that to us, I think. Because, and I'm sorry, and that is the point I was, I was about to make. We would like to do what's called construction management at risk instead of- of the, um, design bid build, which is what we've done for all of our projects before. Under the construction management risk, what happens is they, we do the master plan with them. Um, and then we do a solicitation for a builder. And then that builder will then work with the architect and the town as the design is being done. And so they have a, after, after all that's done, then there's a final contract, um, with a set price. And so you're not, there's not, you don't have the risk of the change orders and all those other things that happen. Given the complexity of this project where we're likely to be renovating in place, um, it just made sense to, to use this CMR, uh, process.
And the, I'm assuming these architects feel this is pretty point on with what we're gonna be looking at price-wise, like we're not coming back. I know you talked about the change orders, but I see some of these builders asking for a certain percent to be set aside just for, you know, cost, cost going up on building supplies and things like that. Is any of that built in here, or are we looking at a seven point seven million dollar?
At this point, that seven point seven comes from the space needs analysis that was done by Coach Architects.
Right.
And it's just a placeholder. It's just a, this is what we think it's gonna be.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, and so the true number is not known, and that's, by doing the CMR, they can put in those price escalations as we do it. And so one of the, one of the ways it was described to me is, um, the, the builder could, we could be halfway through the design process, and they know there's a certain electrical component that's in there.
Sure.
And they could say, that electrical component has a fifty-week wait. So we either need to design with a different electrical component, or even though we're still in the design process, let's go ahead and order those parts, and that way you're not being held up.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, being this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That passes. Consideration for professional services for creation of a unified development ordinance, Justin?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Um, similar to social media, um, bids, uh, staff solicited bids for qualifications or, or, uh, for consultants to create the town's first unified development ordinance. Uh, what a UDO in short is, is a collection of all our books updated, but all in one, one book, one binder, so to speak, so our land development regs, our zoning ordinance, our stormwater regulations, things of that nature. Uh, it will also be looked at and upgraded to today's standards, um, best management practices, what other towns do, things that we don't have currently in our toolbox. Uh, jokingly say, you know, in our toolbox, we have a hammer and, and a Phillips head screwdriver, and that's about it. There's other things we could do out there, things that may not work for Moncks Corner, but, you know, we need some, some consultants to come in here and, and help us kinda look at what fits this town, upgrade our rules, um, so development can become more efficient as well as, uh, held to a higher standard as we continue to see these growth pressures. So we did a, a request for bids, we got seven submittals, uh, from firms all around the country. Uh, we interviewed three of them, and, uh, we are recommending one of them for two hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, in the name of Inspire Placemaking.
Um, let's do a motion. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, two hundred and forty thousand dollars to put everything together, you gotta talk to me about that.
Sure. Uh, North Charleston is looking to budget about a million, Somerville just did theirs for five hundred thousand. The city of High Point, ten years ago, did ours for three hundred and fifty thousand. So it's on the cheaper end. Uh, all of our seven bids and submittals came in about that same price. Some were a little cheaper, ten grand here, twenty grand there, but, um, this was in line with what we expected based on our growth, our needs, and what others in the area immediately, uh, adjacent to us are experiencing.
And talk to me about, I can obviously read it on here, I just want you to talk about it out loud, uh, for everybody. What is a sixteen-month process? I know, I know they're putting that together, but, but it'll take about sixteen months. Can you, can you elaborate on, on that timeframe and what that looks like, and how involved you are in that process?
Um, to answer the second part of the question, uh, very simply, I'm, I'm heavily involved. Jokingly, Jeff won't let me do it by myself. No, I, I kid, I, I have done them by myself, I have done them with consultants. It is far easier to have somebody doing the heavy lift, specifically what state law is, they, these are subject matter experts for what we can and cannot implement. I can rattle off a whole bunch of, uh, legal cases and precedents, um, that, uh, would restrict us, particularly with signage and things of that nature. These are people that live and work and breathe in this. I dabble in it on occasion, so, uh, they'll be able to help us, but with regard to their connection to the town and what we implement already, and what historically the town has liked to see, seen, what we have seen and what we would like to see, I'm their point of contact, and we'll, we'll be heavily working with them to make sure it fits Moncks Corner. If they could just write a standard one and give it to us, it'd be significantly cheaper, but we need one that fits this town, this character, and our growth patterns, and not everybody does that. In terms of the, um, length of time, the biggest thing about a UDO or any ordinance, big heavy lift like this, is the public involvement. Uh, obviously, um, this will require not just me in a back room with these people to, to navigate the rules and present them to y'all. A, it'll require public input, so they do plan on having several, um, public sessions, whether it's at the farmer's market or Berkeley County football game, something of that nature, to make sure that people are aware, very similar to what we did with the park master plan or the comp plan, right? Reaching out to those, those that are affected by this, developers, builders, property owners, homeowners, things of that nature, so that we can get an understanding of what works, what they'd like to see, what's easy, what doesn't work, things of that nature. And then they'll run it through the wringer of making sure it's all legal, and then taking it to Planning Commission, who will be the, um, uh, another very intricate, um, organization or, or, or board, so to speak, involved with this. So it will take a, about sixteen months, mainly because we wanna make sure that we have as much public input as we can, uh, being Planning Commission and, and the public themselves through outreach.
And the ultimate goal here is to be more efficient? Is that the way I'm understanding this? They're gonna review all of our ordinances. We may have some that are obscure, if you will, so they're gonna consolidate those. And then you're saying, put it in a book form? Will they do any, are we gonna do anything to the ordinances that are on the town's website? Is it, is it gonna be cataloged any differently?
That, well, there's, there's, when we say ordinances, there's two major functions. There's the town code, which is on MuniCode.
Yep.
That is town code that staff is currently reviewing right now, and any changes obviously will come to y'all. And then there's zoning code.
Yep.
And zoning code handles any development, whether it's, uh, vertical, horizontal, uh, construction, uh, such as, you know, how big your pipes have to be, how your radius of your curves, how long the roads can be, or what your buildings can look like. Uh, the zoning code, land development regs, this will be this process. Um, so we do hope to have this online. I believe they even mentioned, uh, talking about hosting a website, but it will be a digital book as, in addition to a bound book as well. So readily available. I mean, the point of this is, is to make sure, uh, the, the analogy I always use is, is if it affects anybody in the public, anybody in the public should be able to access it, read and understand it.
Last question.
Yes, sir.
Was this originally included in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Was this one?
Yes, sir.
I thought we budgeted two fifty.
You said you would hope this was included in, in some type of web format, is that what I heard?
Yes, sir, I'm fairly certain this, again, that we, we interviewed, uh, we, we took seven submittals, um, they all had some sort of design. What we really looked at when we interviewed the individual companies and what we made very apparent to them was, we need graphics, we need charts, and we need accessibility. And, uh, a lot of them, if not all of them, had, um, some sort of website or, um, interactive, um, way to be able to reach out to the public, and the public be able to see what's going on.
For me to feel good about this price, I want online access for the public.
I mean, I think there might be a little bit of a, so what he's talking about is, is the, the, the public input portion? You're talking about the end product.
Right.
It will absolutely be online.
Okay, that's what I wanna make sure of. Okay, alright, that's what I wanna make sure of.
It'll be easier to.
Sign, sign ordinance will be part of this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect.
Last question. Are we gonna invite any contractors to provide input into this?
The, the goal is, is to get everybody who is affected by this. I've already had a couple of conversations, preliminary offline conversations with developers as well as builders and contractors to make sure that, um, this is something they can live with. Obviously, any book, um, any ordinance that is put forth to y'all needs to have input from all those that are affected, not just the end user, but also, um, anybody along that supply chain or, or that, that process.
I think it'd be very beneficial to have, you know, some representative from Atrite Construction, a D.R. Horton Homes, folks that we're currently dealing with. I think it'd be, I think we need to strongly encourage them to come up here since we're dealing with them on a regular basis and probably will continue dealing with them on a regular basis for them to have input on this.
Agreed. And one, one last point I'd like to make, um, for y'all is, you know, you did the comp plan, this is the implementation of the findings of the comp plan. And when he talks about the binder, we're figuratively putting three or four different documents together. And so what we end up with now with different documents, you know, if we update this document, this one has some kind of reference to it, and we don't make that connection, now this one doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
It's about putting everything together into a unified, unified development ordinance, and makes it so that going forward, it's a lot easier to make everything comparable.
Can you remind me what was budgeted for this?
Two fifty.
I thought so. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That passes. Old business, there is no old business to be brought before council. Public input, if you signed up for public input, I will call your name, please come up to the podium, you will have three minutes to speak. This time is to give citizens a chance to give the town officials feedback. If you would like any follow-up and have checked the box on the signup sheet, someone from the appropriate department will be in touch. This meeting is for the council and myself to do the business of the town of Moncks Corner, so discussion on what you address will be limited. Thank you. Our first speaker is Jody Nyers. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jody Nyers at one-one-two Mulberry Crossing Lane. I have a few items to discuss, discuss tonight, hopefully I'll get it done in my allotted three minutes. The first one is the development that's going on, Main Street Extension, but the issue is Edward Drive and R.C. Dennis Boulevard entrance exit. As you may recall, this was discussed a few meetings ago. The Fair Lawn neighborhood has a petition that we garnered that has over half the community voting against this entrance exit. This is the second one, the main one is on Main Street Extended. Uh, I believe there might be a FOIA request out that has some information that will be discussed after this. Our concern is, of course, that we're gonna be adding a second entrance exit out of this small townhouse development that is going to end up causing public safety issues, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many that are in that community. The development also has a second partial or phase that's across the street, that can only have one entrance and exit, and that will be on R.C. Dennis Boulevard. Since the development that you're expecting to have the second entrance exit is under construction right now, but the opening for that has not occurred, we just wish that you would please revisit this issue to not make that happen. Public safety issues will arise, they could be huge, between drivers trying to attempt to turn left, even though we're supposed to be making a right out of that development, into oncoming traffic, pedestrians who are going to be attempting to cross R.C. Dennis Boulevard, to the neighbors in Fair Lawn that are gonna be exiting their neighborhood and coming in contact with drivers that are attempting to cross illegally. A single entrance exit on Main Street Extended is more than enough for this new small community, and that is according to the SEDOT engineer that I spoke to. So I'm not sure why the town is insisting on this second entrance. Um, I hate to think that maybe it's because, you know, there's some kind of a situation that developed years ago and the development of this. This may be before your predecessor, before you were in this position, or all of you. At the end of the day, we just want you to look at this and, and carefully revisit it before they cut open that, put up, put this entrance there, have an intersection with no lights, no nothing, R.C. Dennis Boulevard is very busy, as we know. My second discussion is about curbs being painted on seventeen A in front of the Kentucky Fried Chicken. Mayor, you and I have talked about this greatly. That shopping center may not be, I'm not sure where it stands within the town, but I have been in contact with State Representative Celeste Davis, who's reached out to the county and others with SEDOT in hopes of getting that curb area painted to, again, protect the public, take into consideration the public safety issues. I even offered to paint it myself, but they said I couldn't do it. So all of this goes in line with public safety concerns for R.C. Dennis Boulevard, Edward Drive, and also on seventeen A, because we have a lot of visitors, residents, and travelers that go up and down these roads, as you well know, we're very heavily traveled. That's my time? Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, our next speaker is Dana Ball. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and, oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Dana Ball. Um, I live at eleven-ten Avery Drive, and I'm a resident of Fair Lawn Barony, coming to address my concerns regarding the proposed exit across from Edward Drive for the new development. According to the traffic study that was conducted, even with the two percent, um, growth estimate, the intersection in question would not meet the town's traffic ordinance without modifications. It was proposed to implement a left-turn lane in which there's not adequate space without encouraging on property not owned by the town. The solution has been decided to allow for enough room for one vehicle to sneak by for a right turn. If we already expect this intersection to barely meet town ordinance, why not take a proactive approach to prevent future congestion and safety risks? Traffic conditions rarely improve over time. We should be planning for long-term solutions rather than short-term estimates. Additionally, we have a volunteer fire station that relies on quick and efficient access to this road. If the exit is built as proposed, it could significantly hinder emergency response times, putting lives at risk. Given these concerns, we ask the town to reconsider the placement of the second exit or remove it altogether. The town is facilitating this change and traffic patterns by approving this development, and with that comes the responsibility to require long-term solutions from the developer, solutions that address not just immediate traffic impact, but also inevitable growth. The current traffic study assumes only a two percent increase, but we all know that growth doesn't always fit into those projections. When traffic inevitably worsens, DOT shouldn't have to fix a preventable problem. Instead of waiting for issues to arise, we urge the town to take a proactive approach by ensuring the developer is held accountable for infrastructure improvements now, not years down the road. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Alright, executive session, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in executive session.
Mayor, can you read the?
Oh. Um, this is for negotiations related to the revision of services for recreation. This is for negotiations related to the revision of services for recreation. This is for negotiations related to the revision of services for recreation.
Thank you.